All right. Seeing as 7:01, I would like to call the October 5th study session of Board of Education to order if we can start with the pledges.
(inaudible)
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 The Westeran Icoy Central School District acknowledges the indigenous people of this region and that the school district sits on the homelands of the Anaduaga of the Hodenasumi Confederacy. It is on these lands that we teach, learn, and live.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next on the agenda, or first on the agenda, is the approval of the agenda. And before I ask Dr. Johnson if there's any changes to the agenda, we do need to announce that Ms. Schaus has submitted her resignation effective September 29th from the Board of Education, so I imagine there will be some agenda items related to that. So, Dr. Johnson, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have one. We'd like to add B6, Board Member Resignation.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for the second. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? That is 6-0, Ms. Lustig. Next is public comment. We don't have anyone who is going... Karen, I believe you're just doing the presentation, right? You're not speaking at public comment. So, we have no one speaking at public comment, but we do welcome the public to all of our board meetings. We're here pretty much every other Thursday. Next is review of the minutes. This is just a review of our September 21st meeting minutes. If there are any questions, comments, changes, please reach out to Mrs. Lustig, and we approve and anticipate approval at the October 19th meeting. Next on the agenda is item B6, as Dr. Johnson just mentioned. May I have the recommended action, please?
Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Westeran Icoy Central School District acknowledges the resignation of Board Member Courtney Schaus effective September 29th, 2023.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vayner. How does that... Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any questions or comments on the resignation itself? And then afterwards, we'll have some time carved out to talk about the vacancy that is resulting from said resignation. All right, seeing none, all those in favor? That is 6-0, Ms. Lustig. Do you want to thank Ms. Schaus for her service to our district, both in her time on the Board and in her work prior to Board service? She inspired us to challenge our thinking on many issues, and Westeran Icoy is in a better place because of it. So now we can talk about what we do with the vacancy. We have, according to school law, a couple different options. What most districts generally... Do you want to do it? Or we can do it? Okay. Most districts generally appoint someone from the community to fill out the remainder of the term, and that person would serve from the date of the appointment until the date of the next election. And then from that point forward, they would be... Fill out the remainder of that term. We also have the option to hold a special election, and we also have the option to leave a seat vacant. So, I know we have had other districts in the community, in the county, that have had vacant seats, so Dr. Johnson has reached out to some of those in the past week to gather some resources from them, and he put together some information for us. So now, I'll give it over to you.
So, depending on what the Board chooses to do, this is a sample of an application process if we choose to solicit applications to the Board. Did some light editing to update this for our use, and again, I'll turn it back to that as far as the choice of the Board, and then whether we want to move forward and talk more about this material.
Yeah, so all of the dates in this document are just placeholders that we can modify, if need be. The only one that's not modifiable is the May 21st, 2024, because that would be the date of the election. So, the Board member would serve from whatever day they were appointed until that election, and then after that election, it would be... Fill out the rest of Ms. Schaus's term, which would be until 2025. They didn't have to run again, or they'd get the...
So, what would happen there?
It's the first...
The fourth vote there would fill out the remainder of her term. I speak from experience.
Right.
So, there would be three Board seats, and then that would be the fourth one.
So whoever finished in the fourth voting slot would fill out her term, and then so they would have to run again in two years.
Right. Even if that fourth person is incumbent? Because it could.
It is.
It doesn't matter. Okay. So somebody's term could change if they...
You could go on a different side.
Somebody would have to run two years in a row if they wanted to seek another term. Couple things we have to decide. This is... We borrowed this from another district. That district requires Board members... Requires voters, they're going to be registered voters. We historically have not required the voters or Board members in our district to be registered voters, just to be residents. So that's something to consider. And then on the back, there's just a timeline that is placeholder numbers for now. For reference, we have meetings coming up on the 19th and November 2nd, which is where these dates come from, sort of backtracking from those meetings, but they don't... We don't have to be that accelerated. We could, in theory, be more accelerated, but it would seem not super easy to do that. And with that, I will open up the floor for conversation.
So, John, you had mentioned that you speak from experience. So in the past, is this the process that we have followed?
So, no. And the process in the past was, I don't know how they had the person... They picked the person to serve, but I believe they... The Board also has the option to ask someone to serve without an application process. What they did is Susan Drier, who's passed away, this room was named after her, had a medical bench, she passed away. They had Marcia Bavensi had just finished her term, and they were going into a large capital and budget thing. Marcia was already into Board service, you know, for years, I think 12 years she served was President, so understood and was able to jump in and hit the ground running also. The Board does have someone we could ask. I don't know if they're willing, but there's one... There's another option to dish the application process to.
Yeah, that is correct. All in... What I have school law here up on my tab, but really all it says is a majority vote of the Board to appoint a person, so.
I agree with the thing is, we've always said, like, in our Board packet, you don't have to be registered to vote, you have to be a district resident, so to be consistent with what we do for our normal elections, I would not... I would vote for not to have... They have to register to vote. They just have to be a district resident. I think it's fair. I don't know what the other rest of the Board thinks, but...
Yeah, I think that makes sense. More consistent, sustainable.
So let's kind of narrow it down. Are we all... Toward...
I have a question.
Okay.
So, obviously, there's a cost with a special election. I don't know what that would look like, but that would be something that would be interesting to know. But the fact is, this is a not... This is a different year. We have three Board seats that open, plus we'd have another election, so there's four Board seats. We're only a Board of seven. You could have a group run. If they win all seats, they could come in and control the Board. And that means they could decide not to do a certain program if they didn't want to anymore, or... So there is some risk about going for continuity reasons, okay? Which is a big thing for our administrative staff, to have some type of continuity, how we've budgeted, we've built reserves for capital, and what that looks like going down the road, to have possibly a group to come in and say, you know, we don't want to do that. So there is a risk with the four seats being open at once.
And just for clarification, if there is a special election, that person would serve until June of 2025, they wouldn't run again in May?
Yeah, they would fill the whole seat.
Right.
Yeah, I would like to know the cost of a special election. It's a good question.
And I'd like to know what timeline, like, is there a requirement?
It's 90 days if we do it. 90 days it has to be done within 90 days.
And then there's questions like, if we did that, and two people wanted to run, would we do candidates? Now, you know, we have to engage PTSA, you know? Or do we just let that go? You know what I mean? This is outside of the normal parameters again, and it... I admit, there is some expense, but there's another way, expense versus risk.
And there's a lot of logistics involved in the actual election itself, as far as Mrs. Lustig's office and all the people we bring in to monitor the polls and that sort of thing.
I don't think we'd do as much, but we would have to have some. We could probably hold it here. Those are my thoughts on it. If it was any other year, I wouldn't... I could leave it open, or we could appoint someone, but there is a risk this year.
Other thoughts?
Jenna, do you have an idea? And I'm not holding you anything. You could...
Cost?
If you had to guess a number?
Well, I know I pay... It would probably be a couple thousand dollars, I would think.
Why don't we work on that?
Yeah, again, I'm not putting you on spies. Just wondering. I have no idea what's the election cost.
Yeah, if it's a smaller scale.
What would be the breakpoint of the Board? Would be a breaking point for cost, just so we know as we go back and look, because that could affect our planning, too.
Well, I think you need to... You need to help us with the Board, because obviously, we would engage district staff, and how does that affect, I'll say, the day-to-day operations of... Jenna happened to run a special election. She would be the most... I don't want to say the point person, I would say. You know what I mean? So, how that would affect, and then if the Board has to weigh, is the financial outlay worth the risk of happening?
So, as Board Leadership, do you guys have a recommendation, or...
I mean, it's really a decision for all of us. I understand John's point that mathematically it can be problematic, right?
So, the application process. So the person... I was just looking at the numbers. Did you say it was 225, then, the duration of the appointment?
No, if we appointed someone, they would only serve until the election.
Okay.
So they would serve through May, and then whoever... And it may not be the appointee. Let's say there was five candidates, and the appointee came in fifth, they would be done as of the day of the election. And then whoever came in fourth would be appointed for the next 15 months, 12 or 13 months.
Forty-six days in one year.
Forty-six. And then the one, two, and three would serve a three-year term, and number four would have to run again, or their term would be done following.
Oh, my gosh!
Would all the same parameters be in place as far as what... They have to get the signatures, they have to go through that same process?
Yes, they would have to get the petition signatures, I believe, all the financial disclosures.
Only for the special election?
Right, because whoever wins is... If we had a special election, whoever won the special election would serve until June 25.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha.
And then a question on that is, in a special election, there won't be a school Board financial training? They could possibly... And the question would be, how would we cover that person? Because it says in the first year. You know, you don't say in the Board the financial Board training you have to do in your first year.
I think it's a calendar year, though.
I'm just saying, that's just a question in my mind that just popped up.
We could work with...
Yeah, NISBA has an online...
So, I'm just... That would be something we would want to make sure we...
And my two cents about the cost here is, you know, I don't see it exceeding... I mean, if it's $5,000, that's a lot. I mean, that would be my perspective on it. So it's really, if that's the will of the Board, we're going to make it happen, okay? So don't... I would say, in the grand scheme of everything, in our operating budget, don't let that be a barrier.
I know, I thought of that, is that max out cost would be $10,000, maybe?
You think 10?
No, I'm just saying, it would not. No, I think it'd be less, so I would...
He's always put worst case scenario. I love that budget.
Listen, he's also ultra-conservative, so I know...
I'm gonna throw this over if we cover it at $3,000.
Actually, it's gonna be about $3,000.
And then that process is 90 days. We'd have to do it by... I mean, what are the chances we don't even have anybody who's interested?
That is a potential...
We could put it out there, and if we don't get petitions, we could always just...
Take your point.
...appoint them.
Do we still have to appoint within 90 days as well?
Otherwise, it just stays open.
Right.
So we could do no action, and it just stays open till June or May.
I believe there is some weird loophole that if we do nothing, the Boce Superintendent should...
Can't afford it.
I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if that's happened.
Ever, not to my knowledge.
But that could happen in there.
But we could always ask our Board, Boce's Board, rep if they want to serve.
Yeah. We're not making any decisions tonight.
Yeah, so this is all brand-new information.
I'm in favor of exploring an election for more for continuity reasons.
I agree.
Yeah, I would explore that, but then I would also have some people in mind that we might be reaching out to, might be interested in being appointed.
Anne had always said when she left, if we needed her to serve, she would consider it, so...
That is true.
I think Board Leadership could have a conversation, too.
That was my first thought as well.
That was my first thought, can I tell you? I'm just...
Yeah.
I don't want to put her on the spot.
I kind of got that.
It's too late. We put her on the spot.
Sorry, Anne.
We won't tell her. We'll wait and see if she watches the video.
But, I mean, would it help to know if, you know, if people were running again next year? I mean, unless... I hate, like, you know, saying things in the future.
It's early. It's early for that.
But...
I think to John's point, you know, we haven't always seen huge lists of candidates, at least in my experience, but to John, that could be a poke to some people, like, hey, we can literally take over the Board. And, I mean, that's why I think a special election meant conversation, because you may see people that wouldn't necessarily consider it run, consider it because of the potential.
I could go either way on it. I don't have a... I totally see both sides of it. I think logistically, special election is a big lift. I think appointing, whether we select someone without interview process or conduct an interview process, we don't have a template for that, right? Other than, you know, what we've got from other districts, so we're sort of making that up as we go.
The application process would be, again, another burdensome on the administrative staff, because it was someone who didn't have private Board experience. We would have to have them meet with instruction, meet with personnel, meet with that whole two days you spent getting to this chair, onboarding process.
Might even more.
Yeah, I'm saying, I don't know, but I'm just... Again, there is a... Another burden to... But that person would probably have to do that in this special election, too, so...
Right.
Should we reach out to Anne and see if that's a minute she would be interested in before making a consensus, maybe, like, touch a big...
Can? I'm happy to call.
But that still leaves four seats open in May.
Right.
And that's the real question. Do we want to go into May with four seats, or do we want to keep the regular election cycle?
Yeah. I think going for the special election, seeing if that process works out, that's probably the best way to go, if, in case nobody wants to run, then...
I mean, exactly. You get to May, and only have three people put in petitions, and you've got to hope to see.
Right.
Yeah, or, I mean, something that we could try to get done before the holidays, winter break, or the person meeting afterwards, so that that person is in the chair before the budget-planning process.
A question, maybe from Laura, would be, would it be 90 days from the resignation or from the acceptance of the resignation?
The resignation.
The resignation.
Right. Yep. So early December, gotta have it by the 2nd.
Maybe it's a special election?
Aaron, do you want to give us some information on it?
Sure. Figure out what the cost is.
It doesn't take Board action, does it? I mean, would take Board action for a special election, but...
To hold one?
No, no, I'm saying, to go that route, right, Jenna? You'd have to declare a vacancy, and then say, we're going to do an election on one.
Yeah, I would think so.
Testing you. I'm not testing you, but this is like Ford clerk law that...
I have a lot of answers, and I don't have that on my mind.
There's like three paragraphs in here on what you did.
Well, sure. It's just clerk law.
Special election has to be 90 days after the resignation?
Within 90 days.
Within 90?
Yeah, you have to have it within 90 days.
So December 28th is the 90-day mark, matches calculated. All right, so we have... Sounds like we have an action plan. We will look that up. I am happy to place a call to engage interests of a former Board member, and we can...
There's more than one.
That's true. I reached out to one who holds a different office, and he's not interested.
That's also...
So we, yeah, we can talk to some people, see what the interest looks like, and maybe that'll help us make our decision, or help.
We'll put together a plan for a special election.
Yeah.
Piece of cake.
Thank you, Jenna. We owe you dinner. Everyone good with this?
Be careful, it's like camera.
I know, right? Yeah. Okay. Uh-oh. Last thing, Ms. Schaus's liaison assignments, we will need to fill for the time being. She currently has served on PTSA, TLC, and was the DAK liaison.
Now, DAK.
Yeah, so DAK is really the only one that I'm worried about, because I'm sure TLC is fine, right?
Yep.
And are you okay doing PTSA?
Yeah.
Okay. And then she had also expressed interest in the Policy Committee. She was one of the two members that were selected there, so if anyone else...
Who's in policy?
I'll do DAK.
And John's offered. Easy peasy.
Yeah, I'll coordinate my high school and DAK.
There you go.
Morning high school, afternoon DAK.
If you wait long enough, you can pick a race.
I'll mention Eric Raisin. I'd have to curve, though, right?
Right, it does curve. It's longer, though, because it's curved. I just signed a lot of bridge-related paperwork, so it's now a reality. Okay. Yes?
And since we're talking about policies or committees, we have the new Wellness Committee. So Vicki, thank you for your offering of interest there. I just want to check into the Board. Is there a second person? Are people of the Board good with...
Can you remind me of the Wellness Committee? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the Wellness Committee is something that we're required to have as a district. We believe that it was folded into the Health and Safety Committee. At this point, because of, you know, the Health and Safety Committee has the... Just the material that we process and are responsible for is so large, that we're breaking that off, and Michelle's leading that committee this year. One of the first tasks is to review the policy itself. So it's a lengthy group of stakeholders, 20-plus.
People on that?
From the Board, I'd say.
Vicki has... She's expressed interest.
So being that it's a new committee, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Matt, but maybe the President should sit on it.
Yeah, I know.
If you can fit it. I'm just... Especially being a new committee.
I'll have an issue. I know you were interested.
Oh, remember, I'm more of leadership, what I'm saying, it would be...
A, just put down A.
Just put a M.
Just put M. We don't have the problem we used to have. Only two of them there.
Okay.
Man, I didn't even know you were...
I was actually thinking about it before, so I'm completely happy to do it.
And then, Aaron, you know what? Well, I expect him to leave, so... What's on going to do it? From Troy?
Troy?
Do the introduction.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll take care of it.
Yeah, okay. I won't reach out till then.
Okay. Any other discussion on Board vacancies or committee assignments?
Maybe do make a motion for those changes to, because those are...
I think we probably do do it, yeah. Aren't those voted on? Committee assignments?
Yeah, they're Board members. Okay.
Do you want to do it as a next speech?
Yeah, I don't think...
It's up to you.
Yeah, let's do it on the next... It's not worth it, we do it now. Okay. C, Report of the Superintendent.
It's my pleasure to report. It's a superintendent. Well, thanks for just working our way through that. I appreciate your teamwork in just addressing that need. Sounds like we have a solid plan moving forward. So, as we know, you know, one of the questions that we're going to ground ourselves to this year is how are all the children? And so we've been using this as kind of a rally cry through, you know, through our different meetings with our leadership and staff. And so I'll start tonight, and here's some pictures up here that just represent how the children are. If you look at the top there, left, we had a group of students, quite a large group of students, go to what's called Rock Near Hands, and that was down at the old Rhino Stadium. And so what that was, it's kind of a career tech fair where the kids can go, they can explore, like apprenticeships in different technical fields. There's some technical schools that go there. I saw some pictures of our students. I don't believe that they were operating an excavator. They may have been. I didn't see it move in the picture, but they were up there, kind of getting a feel for it. So I just think that's a really great benefit for our kids. I want to say thank you to the College and Career Center and ICHAS for putting that together. We also see right below that something special that they're doing at Iroquois, and I believe this started at least a year ago, but near the beginning of the year, the entire building breaks for a period of time on a day, and the staff put together kind of these community building exercises and activities for the kids. And as we know, it's a best practice with SCL, with restorative practices, it's community building, it's something that our staff has worked very hard to integrate into the daily life of our students, and this is a great way to kick off the year, to just kind of bond together as a building. So kudos to them. James will appreciate this one down the lower left-hand corner. That, what is that, James?
Icoy Invitation.
Icoy Invitation. He's attended that for many years, one of the largest in the region. So we had a really great showing this year. We had a super cross-country team. Our girls placed third in that for the large schools, and our boys placed seventh, so kudos to them. They just had an outstanding year, as many of our teams are.
That's the biggest meeting on the East Coast?
Is it really? Is it really?
Seventy-two, seventy-two hundred runners this year.
Wow. Some, someday you and I are gonna go to a trivia night. That would be fun.
I just have to be talking to the guy that, I just have to be talking to the guy that runs it.
And in the upper right hand corner, we have some cornhole aficionados amongst us. So West Iroquois Foundation had their new annual, it's not new, it's newer, annual cornhole tournament. I think there's thirty-two total teams, they raised just under fifteen K. We have a couple bird newspapers that have been icing down their elbows after doing that, and would appreciate everybody that invested themselves in that to raise money for our students, you know, all that goes back with the donations to our students, so thank you to them, and a big shout out to Jeff DeVerona, because he was really kind of the tip of the spear on that, he led a lot of that and helped orchestrate that, he's doing a great job. Few special recognitions this month, so this is National Principals Month, and we have an outstanding set of leaders at our buildings, and so we just want to recognize those folks for their tremendous leadership, you know, there's just a lot of sacrifices they make, the investment, enthusiasm, I couldn't ask for a better group to partner with as a superintendent, so I just want to thank them for their work and their leadership throughout the year. Special time for them. And then it was recently National Custodian Appreciation Month, and so you can see some of our building custodians and cleaners there. We have, again, just a phenomenal group, fleet of people who sometimes work during the day, we see them, many of them do not, and they work off hours, but thanks to them, every day we walk into just a clean, safe environment that's ready for learning, we appreciate everything that they do. Something new as well, that Mr. DeVerona has spearheaded, so we know culture is one of the most important things for our success as a district, you know, and that goes along with building, you know, positive relationships and a warm, welcoming environment. And so, you know, he mentioned the idea of starting a staff spotlight, something where our staff can nominate one another for outstanding reasons, and could just be some work that they're doing, maybe a special accomplishment. He's done a great job of highlighting them on social media. So most recently, Jamie Giuliano, one of our literacy coaches, right, our instructional coaches, was highlighted, and you can see there, I love her quote, around literacy, as far as that being the foundation for learning with our students. And then Joe Barber at the high school, he's our lead custodian at the high school. Last time I looked on Facebook, I think I saw at least a hundred and twenty-five hearts there, he was getting a lot of likes, and met with him a few days ago. So kudos to them, and thanks to Jeff for being a contributor to building our positive culture. Some updates here from across the district, we've been working on our focus area presentation, so thanks to Chrissy and her leadership, we spent a few hours this week as a K-12 group, just planning that out, mapping that, as far as what we're doing connected to the management plan this year, our instructional blueprint, right, and school-based plan, so excited to be able to present that to you on the nineteenth. A little shift in the format, we'll be over at Listwood again, with no blow up presentation screen, so we had to play rock, paper, scissors for that, Ms. Lustig at high, and she won, so... But we did, you know, we're gonna make the investment in a large screen that doesn't make that humming noise during the presentation, so we'll be upset. But what's really new there is we've invited our whole leadership team to have dinner with you, and instead of having like a gallery seating here, like an audience, we'll have tables and different things, and so we're gonna kick that off at four thirty for folks who can make it, and just a time to break bread with those folks and bond, and just have some conversation before the presentation, so appreciate Ms. Lustig setting that up and for the recommendation. We talked about reviving the district Wellness Committee, so thanks to Michelle for her work on that. We also talked about the Policy Committee and the policy review cycle, so this year, again, Michelle is leading the charge with that, we're excited to kick that off, this was a goal for the board that you set last year, and so we structured the schedule, we'll be working our way through Sections one thousand through three thousand, correct, Michelle? Yep, this year, and looking at the policies from a DEI lens, and I'm excited, you shared some resources with me the other day that you're gonna use to kind of set the stage, and I think it's gonna be a really beneficial process, so thanks for that. And then last, today we spent a full day, three committees, interviewing four semifinalists, I guess we'll call them, that have been through paper screens, and some went on a short pre-screen, some administrators, and so they went through committee interviews today, one with some parents and staff, one with administrators, and then one with students, and so they really went through the ringer today, and Michelle's in the process of co-letting all the feedback, we'll discuss that very soon, and then we'll pass two to three to me, and for the final leg, they'll be doing an interview with our executive cabinet, interview with me, and then most likely I will also visit the location of employment and observe them in action, so we're excited, a really great group, so thanks for your work on that too, and for everybody that have participated in that, a full day, you know, great discussion. I, I chose to kind of drop that this year and sit in the back of one of the committees and just watch, it was really good to just listen to the conversation and dialogue. That's the report, any questions? Go, Karen.
Anything for Dr. Johnson?
I'm sorry, so you're going to go observe them in the place of, oh, like, that, that's fun?
And their native land.
Pre-observation.
That is, yep. Yeah. It's good to feel for how they interact with people, right, and things like that, so... Yep, and then they'll also meet with the staff, so...
Any other questions for Dr. Johnson? All right, next on the agenda, we have a very special guest with us to talk to us about a very special and unique asset that we have in our district, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Johnson to introduce it, and...
Yeah, I'm gonna, after I say a few words, I'm gonna turn to James, because he supervises Karen and works very closely in supporting the nature center, but Karen, I just want to say, thanks so much for preparing the presentation, for all the work that you do to support our classrooms and our students, and well beyond West Iroquois is a real gift, and you just do a phenomenal job with what you offer, so glad to have you tonight, thank you.
Yep, James?
That would be great as well, I mean, you're gonna see tonight Karen has a lot of enthusiasm for Homer Nature Center, a lot of pride she carries around with what goes on there and the people she gets to work with, she put together a great presentation for us tonight, she's gonna really focus on what's going on now, but she also is a great steward of the history of Homer as well, so at the end of the slides, just for your reference later on, you can see some of the history of the Homer Nature Center as well, because this is a special year, if I'm not gonna steal that from her.
This is a very... Right in. Just a forward here.
Come on!
Wouldn't surprise me. Act like I'm watching. You're doing excellent.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for inviting me, everybody. Yeah, special year this year, fifty years. Yeah, so like James said at the end of the PowerPoint, feel free to check some of the history pieces that we wrote up, and some of the old pictures, which I personally really enjoy. So tonight, we're just gonna talk about the education system that we have over at Homer Nature Center. First, I just wanted to speak to our mission, our mission is to utilize the natural room of the classroom in order to provide practical, integrated learning opportunities, foster environmental awareness, and promote the concept of global stewardship for lifelong learners. That mission statement has been in effect as long as I can remember, and it's still pertinent today. Okay, wanted to mention our current staffing that we have over at Homer. We have one full-time director, that would be me, one full-time education coordinator, who's also a naturalist educator, that person, we are gonna be having a new hire in a couple of weeks for that position. We have two part-time naturalist educators, one part-time community and member events coordinator, that's the person that sets up all our festivals and extra activities that we do at the nature center. And a new position is a full-time trails and grounds supervisor, which has been of tremendous benefit, because, and you can tell by just going to the grounds and seeing all the work that's been done, it used to be twenty hours of work, double that work, you can just imagine what a difference it's made, it's been great. And HNC programs offer alignment with New York standards, integrated learning opportunities, hands-on activities, program modification to meet specific goals, and live animal ambassadors, which is always a big hit with the kids. So, at the nature center, we receive the K through three classes, they come twice a year, and they can choose what time of year they wanna come, if it's fall and winter, winter, spring, however they want to make it, so we have programs that are available to the K to threes for any time of the year. Fourth and fifth graders, they come to the nature center once per year, the fourth graders come for indigenous people, and fifth graders come for our pond study program. We do get classes from DAK in the high school, they schedule when they're, you know, come when their schedule allows, sometimes there's just not a lot of time in the school year to get them over, and lately they've been coming to do some invasive plant studies with us over at the nature center. And I always like to encourage any other class in the district, or classes, any, you know, any other class to come, design a program, you know, a club, you know, we just love to create and be there for whatever we, we can meet for program needs. Now, our current program, we have twenty-three onsite programs right now for K to twelve students, a number of topics, just some of them are listed up here, seasonal changes, nature clues indigenous, maple sugaring, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, see that all March, snow shoeing in the winter, and a lot of bunch of different opportunities for learning geology, ecology, pond study. We also offer team building, and just about whatever a class is interested in, we will take a look at it and see what we can do. We also offer fourteen in-class programs, that's where our nature center staff will go into the classroom, one class at a time, they last for about forty minutes, these learning segments, sometimes it's just for a couple of classes, sometimes we're there all day doing, you know, different grade levels within there. Those are a lot of fun, we can bring animals in for animal adaptations, we have a winter, snow is our home program that we do, pond in a backpack program, which is, which is fun, worms, we'll bring live worms, they play with live worms. A new program is sounds, it relates to the new curriculum for sound, which is awesome, bird migration, water cycle, team building, of course. So I wanted to provide a sample of an early elementary program that we do, just to give you a chance to see kind of how we set it up and how the days typically go. So this one example I have here is investigating insects, it's for first graders. This program, they come all day, so they come for four hours, we usually get two, two classes at a time, so it's about fifty kids. They rotate through different activities in the morning, have lunch, and a couple of activities after lunch. This is a schedule of what we go by when we're trying to plan a day of activities for kids. It always starts with an introduction, for little kids, we have a puppet show, we do little presentations for them. This particular one has an animal talk where the focus is on insects, we set up bins with different artifacts in it, and the kids go around to the different sections of the resource room, we do a butterfly craft, which relates to parts of an insect, a bee game, which is about directionality, and the kids have fun with that, and they eat lunch, go out to the forest, and they're, you know, turning over logs, they're looking for insects, we give them, you know, lenses and little containers, so they can really go down and explore and interact with nature in that way. Then they go down to the meadow and they use nets to cut sweet nets, and, you know, they're in the back by, actually, our area that we use is in the back of the soccer fields, and you'll notice there's like a little moat trail in there, that's because when the first graders are in there, they stay on the trail, so they'll make a swing from the side, so they go, they have a lot of fun doing that. This is a picture of the sweet nuts, you can see the little part of the moat path there. And that's prior to when they're gonna be going down, and look at some logs. Okay. Sample, just a quick sample of a later elementary program for fifth graders, they always come over for pond ecology, the basic day is pretty much the same, except with this program, we actually visit the classroom prior to them coming, and bring EnviroScape watershed models that they can see, learn a little bit easier about how humans interact with the water, with our watershed and their effects. So what they do, then they come, and it's usually like three days, because there's a lot of fifth graders, they go down to the pond, they collect macro invertebrates, we have pond nets, so they get, they get right in there and involved, we also test the water quality, they, we have four different tests, pH, dissolved oxygen, some other tests, and they, their mission is to determine the equality of the water, the pond water at the nature center. They also do a game, it's called macro vertebrate mayhem, and it's kind of like a, kind of like a tag game, but what they do is they have to simulate the movements of different macro invertebrates that they will see down at the pond, so it's very active, too. In the afternoon, they go on hike, and then they do some, some journaling and observations. Oh, this is them doing in the EnviroScape in one of the schools, we have about five of those models that teachers are able to borrow and use in the classroom, we also offer them to out-of-district use as well. This is them sweeping at the pond, hopefully not falling in, getting their shoes dirty. Okay, community outreach, one of the unique things about the nature center, and I have done a little bit of research on nature centers that are owned by school districts, there are some of it, I mean, a lot of schools have a nature center, staff nature centers with naturalists on staff is much less than that, and nature centers with staff that also can reach out to the community and sort of other districts is even rarer, so we are just so fortunate to have this opportunity to be able to, to reach other community members. This was a program that took place this September, it's the New Visions Career Exploration Program for medical careers, we have them come every September for team building, and these are just some of the out-of-district schools and organizations that we work with on a yearly basis. Once all the West Iroquois groups are scheduled, we do have some gaps, and that's when we can invite others to come in. I did want to mention that we do have licensing that we have to adhere to, we do have memberships to organization, the New York State Outdoor Educator Association, it's my understanding that Earl Helmer, whom the nature center was named after, was a charter member of this organization way back in the sixties. That organization actually led into ANCA, the Association of Nature Center Administrators, which we are also a part, and that gives our members reciprocal benefits to other nature centers across the country. New York State Maple, that's a given, they're wonderful, we also have to have licenses for, to maintain our animal ambassadors, the USDA license that manages all mammals and birds that we have, the DEC license oversees any wildlife that we have that's native, the US Fish and Wildlife, they manage our birds under the Migratory Bird Act. And just in case people were interested, I wanted to just add this, we look for environmental ed resources in a little bit different ways than a typical class would look for, for, you know, information on curriculum development, and these are just some of the folks that we work with, that we reach out to for information. And... Oh, wait, I'm pushing the other button. This button. And this is my favorite view of the nature center, I don't know if you've seen it, it's the top of Sugar Bush, no matter what season it is, it's just... I don't know if you've seen it, it's the top of Sugar Bush, no matter what season it is, it's just, it's just lovely to me, so. And let's see, if anyone has any information, wants additional information on any of our program details or any of the programs that we offer, please feel free to reach out. If you'd like a program guide, if you know organizations that'd like to take part in the nature center or volunteer, send us, send them our way, we would appreciate that, so. That's all I have. Do we have any questions?
Any questions for Karen while she's here about the nature center?
Yeah. One of our volunteers.
First of all, I want to start out by, Karen, thank you for all you do for the nature center, for our students, our community, but also other school districts that have the advantage to come and see the great gem that we have and the time and energy that you've put in to really be the caretaker, I'll say, of the nature center. There's been, I've had the pleasure as a board representative to sit as a liaison with Karen for many years. It's a lot of fun, we, it's kind of a cool, you get to go on a trail walk when you go on an assignment there, so a lot of fun. You get to work, the Shiller Sugar Make a Pancake Breakfast. So there's a lot of fun things, but I think some of the important things too, like the, Austin's a board has supported along with the nature center committee, they like the trail steward, I forgot his name now, the trail supervisor.
Oh, Paul.
Paul. So we had, you know, the luck to have a gentleman join us that was, was he the head gardener or head landscape for Coby Divinity for like 15 years? He's actually really cleaned up the trails and been able to label them, and it's amazing. And he's got, he's working on this program now to have us, and I forgot, we talked about it last year, with the tree species.
Oh, yes, there is a possibility, and we're still looking into it, we're working on it. We have enough tree species to be able to eventually apply for it to be an arboretum over at the nature center. So we're excited about that. The process has been started. We need to develop a maintenance plan. We're going through right now, looking at all our trees and just maintaining them, making sure they're trimmed in proper. You know, will be growing properly for the next, next number of years, so we're excited about that, yeah.
A lot of great work done. And I'll just remind the board, it's next weekend at the Fall Festival.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments for Karen? Thank you for everything that you do there. It's such an asset to our community in Rockaway and our greater community of Monroe County. Like, there's something very exciting happening there on April 8th.
Yes, the eclipse coming, that's a big one.
Helmer is one of the few eclipse ambassadors of the Rochester Museum and Science Center, so very exciting. And it's going to be, James Brennan told me there's going to be not a cloud in this guy's day.
We're actually talking about collaborating with Cornell Cooperative. We've had meetings with them and the Boy Scout groups, trying to get a picture of a lot of the folks that have been ambassadors of your ships and be able to get everybody over, it'll be awesome.
Working together with the glasses.
And the glasses.
They've been ordered and.
They've been ordered, they're not in yet. They had, the museum ordered like 500,000, I think, they said.
A lot of glasses.
Yeah, takes a while to make those.
Well, thank you for coming to visit us tonight too.
Appreciate it.
Great pictures and history and all that. Next on the agenda is report of the leadership staff instruction, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Metris, Ms. Miega, any updates today?
Yeah, I just want to share that we're very excited for a full day of professional learning for our staff tomorrow. And kicking off with a keynote speaker who is a futurist. So want to talk to us about just what are some of those trends in learning and education to help us wrap around our minds around how to support our students moving forward. And then followed up with a lot of different professional learning, many of which are being run by our own district staff. Some of our leaders, but it's while our teacher leaders. So just thank you to all of our staff who have stepped up to lead those sessions. And also just want to mention our custodial staff, who really works hard to make sure that we use lots of different locations on a day like this, and they've done a lot to make sure that it's ready for us.
Can follow me one thing too.
Sure.
So we're also, Mr. Sheller has organized unification drills for our buildings, which is going to be the first time for that, right?
That's right.
And it's been a number of years we've been putting these plans together, and the buildings have had some experience and touch points with these, but now they're really going to take a deeper dive, thanks to Chris who is just planning and orchestrating, so.
Excellent. Any questions for Ms. Miega? Thank you as always. Next is report of the leadership staff personnel, Dr. Johnson.
Sir, I just want to turn it over to Ms. Kramer.
Thank you. So tonight for our first read and approval on our October 19 meeting, we have the resignation of a special education teacher and teaching assistant, resignation of classified staff and secretary to the principal and a teacher aide. We have two unpaid leave of absence, one for personal family leave and one for unpaid FMI intermittent leave. We have the appointment of a full-time teaching assistant and a part-time teaching assistant, full-time teacher aide, part-time teacher aide, staff naturalist, and secretary to the director of instructions. We have the appointment of a monitor and termination of a volunteer coach.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Kramer? And as she said, this is a first read, we anticipate approving this on the October 19 meeting. Next is extracurricular stipends, may I have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that the extracurricular stipends dated October 5th, 2023, as recommended by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Conner, may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Portable. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kramer, anything to add from that?
Oh, yes, we just have some additional extracurriculars that are being added on the agenda and some changes for your.
And any questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? That is six zero, mislisted. That will bring us to new business, and the first item under new business is the Altria settlement resolution. May I have the recommended actions?
The full resolution can be found in Word docs.
Excellent, may I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Bay, may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Portable, I have one more at the same time there. Uh, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so as the board knows, we, we joined the class action lawsuit against Juul, and this was one of the outcomes, and you can see there's an explanation of allocations in there based on student population. I think recently we talked a little bit about fees related to this, and then you can see in the resolution how much we were awarded from that. So we're going to receive $18,577 as a result of the outcome of that lawsuit. That will be used towards the costs of the vaping for our students. So it could be service announcements, it could be, you know, counseling, it could be, so we're going to be working with our new, we don't call counselor. What's your prevent?
We don't know how we're going to spend it yet.
No, we don't.
Does it have to be used on education for this?
As to be used, something related to the impact of vaping on our students. So that's where we'll engage our counselor, talk about that. Could be some of the programming they participate in, smoking cessation.
Damn, okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all those are good. That is six zero, mislisted. Next is approval of parent transportation contract, may I have the recommended resolutions?
Be it resolved that the parent transportation contract at the IRS mileage rate of .655 cents per mile be approved as presented.
May I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Parkers Kramer, may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Portable, Dr. Johnson?
So before I turn it over to Mr. Bren, I just want to say, you know, these are special contracts that we don't see very often, but it's a creative solution, given the state of transportation, some of the challenges, and just ensuring that our students are, have a safe network transportation to the program. And so I just want to say thank you for the problem solving.
Thank you. Yeah, the, again, we've seen that these over the last couple of years, it's really the driver behind it is the shortage of drivers. And, and so the state's really almost encouraged districts to look for creative solutions, make sure students are in positions to get to their programs, whether it's in district or out of district, on a consistent basis, irregardless of whether or not there's a shortage of drivers. So we have worked with a parent. As you can see, this student attends an out-of-district program, and they will, based on student need, periodically drive their student to school to the program. You should more, typically it's more in the morning, is more of the challenge, but there's also buses available as well. So as in move sending a separate bus, it's really the group transportation that causes challenges. We are engaging with a parent to provide the transportation so that the kid can get to the program consistently.
James, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those are good. That is six zero, mislisted. Next is approval of field trip requests, may I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that there were possible varsity cross-country team members to travel to Bronx and Artsley, New York from October 13th through the 15th, 2023, be approved as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Portable, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so this is an invitational event that our teams, actually, our students have to qualify for. So I know that it doesn't follow the typical process for approval of field trip, but given the timeline, it's something that the last couple of years that they had qualified for. We do, we always plan for the expenses, I can see that laid out there. And so I'll for, I won't answer any questions, but again, it's, it's atypical for us, the process goes, and that's why.
Questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none, all those are good. That is six zero, mislisted. That will bring us to the consent agenda, may I have the recommended actions?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the West Rock Aquatic Central School District approves the consent agenda, which includes H2 through H3.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Conner, repeating that is the second, may I have a second, Mr. Sullivan? Tonight's consent agenda includes recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and approval of revised policies 7420, 5630, and 6121. Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed for separate discussion? Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed to vote on separately? Any questions or comments on the consent agenda as a whole? John?
Uh, Dr. Johnson, I just have a question on 7420. Under section, I'll call it section one, on the first page there. Letter B, or no, I'm sorry, old B is now, now it's the C, sorry. The colors are blending better.
Right.
Uh, C, this says obtain medical clearance from school physician. So my question, and if you don't know the answer, this is fine, you can give it to us, but what is the timeline of that? So what is the expected from our school physician? If a student comes back from their doctor and says, you know, this person's cleared to play for whatever reason, what is the expected, anticipated turnaround for our school physician to review that paperwork and then clear a child to play? Because in the past, that's been a problem.
I don't know.
Well, I'm okay with the policy, it makes sense, can we just maybe for our own?
Yeah, I, yep, I will.
And then we have a, a, a professional service contract with him as a school physician, but that would be an interesting.
Yep. And I don't, I mean, one of the things I'll look into is, I'm unsure if this is, if this is intended to address clearance, to be eligible for participation initially, because we do have protocols for return to play, so I have to just look at that and see.
And that's my thing, is academic eligibility, and then does this cover return to play tool? I took it, it did, and if I'm wrong in that, that's fine, maybe it's under a different policy, just.
We'll get an answer to that.
And I guess the question is, if there's a disagreement between a doctor and the school physician, how does that get mediated?
By the return to play.
Well, even in this, so you have to have the medical, and then let's say he, the school physician, they look it over and they don't agree with the, the medical paper. Does he then take responsibility for that and, and set a plan up to allow for that, uh, process? And this doesn't, the policy's good, I just, more of a, I want to say regulations, I'm just wondering, we've had questions in the past from residents about that, I don't think that was good.
Sure you're okay to vote on that?
Oh, yeah, no, that's why I didn't ask to bring it on, I just, that was my question.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those are good. That is six zero, mislisted. That brings us to future meetings. Would you please tell us when our future meetings are, Mr. Johnson?
We have the focus area presentation on October 19th at 5 o'clock at Listwood, followed by a business meeting at 7:00 here at district office, and a study session November 2nd at 7:00 o'clock here at district office.
Thank you very much. Next is executive session, is there a reason to go into executive session tonight?
Uh, yes, there is, to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? Thank you, Mr. Bay, seconded by Ms. Portable. All those are good. That is six zero, we stand adjourned. Thank you everyone very much.